Stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and I give this state's and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, in the best of liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Berman.
Here.
Trustee Bluthart.
Here.
Trustee McNeil.
Here.
Trustee Pierce.
Present.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Present.
Mayor Gardner.
Present. All right, Billy Noel, Mayor reports, although obviously this is a special meeting of the village board to go over the operating budgets. The staff has worked very hard at getting this together for the board and are presenting a balanced budget again, so thank you. And just for topics, we will again have another meeting at a later date to go over the capital one more time, so they were really just talking about operating budget only, not capital budget or projects. Did anyone sign up to address the board? No, okay. There are two items on the consent agenda. Do I have any, do I have a motion in a second or any one wish to remove any of those items?
I wish to remove number two, please.
Okay, we have trustee Pierce making a motion to remove number two from the consent agenda. Do I have a second? All right, do I have a second? Okay, then all in favor, roll call please. Is it removing number two? Yeah.
Berman? Yes. Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
All right, six voting yes, item number two is removed to the regular business. So we have the approval of the February fourteenth, regular meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil. Roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. I'll do these two items first and then I'll go to the items that were removed. First item on the regular business is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable is prepared by staff in the amount of one million, two hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. Do I have a motion and a second?
So.
Second.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Bluthart, any discussion on these items?
There's some higher prices. I have a fund there.
Yeah, I can address that real quick. Any over fifty?
Yep, there is a pay for pay application for the pitman project that was in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. We had some lease payments for public works vehicles that was thirty-two thousand. We had a large insurance payment for employee benefits that exceeded a hundred thousand. And we had a pay application for work done to well number nine in the amount of forty-two thousand, four hundred eighty dollars.
Any questions about those items? All right, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. All right, now we'll go back to the item two that was removed. It's approval of a resolution remanding, remanding for consideration of a special use variance in site plan for solar farm to be located at the property commonly known as six-five-zero East North Avenue. Back to planning and zoning for the purpose of taking additional evidence on the project's potential impacts to avian species and other wildlife and other topics deemed relevant by the planning and zoning board. Do I have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion for discussion sake.
Okay, a motion for denial or motion for approval?
A motion to remand it back based upon discussion.
Okay, I have a motion from trustee Pierce.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. So I believe some of the applicants are here in the room, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know, Michael, if you want to maybe give some context also?
Yes, very briefly, the applicant has requested, do you recall, there is a proposed twenty acre, a proposed solar farm at North Avenue, that this matter did go before the planning commission in January. But January, the planning commission did recommend denial of the proposed variance, special use and site plan. Based on further discussions of the applicant, the applicant has respectfully requested that this matter be remanded back to the planning commission for additional testimony, additional expert witnesses and have the opportunity to provide some additional information to the planning commission before we come back to the village board. The applicant's counsel is actually here, providing additional information. But this is again upon the request of the applicant to remand it back to the planning commission for further additional discussion and further consideration.
Okay, so that, that was my first question of who was requesting this, whether it was the applicant or if it was late opposition, because we got emails like Friday or Saturday from based upon this avian study or whatever. So I was concerned that somebody, somebody presented opposition for late and then we're remanding back, which I didn't think would be fair to the applicant.
Correct.
My other, my other questions that I do want to discuss when they remanded back is if you drive around and look at the ones that are in progress of being built, like right across the border and stuff, there's a lot of surface area that has been packed down real hard with all the truck traffic driving around there, going around each one of the things. And I'm very concerned about how the erosion and the water running will be impacted by the soil compact, compaction that happens.
All right.
And then one other thing that, that I came across was something called agri-foco-votakes, which is where you have a solar farm, but then you plant like natural crops around it or natural vegetation to help help the, the wildlife in the area and also provide cooling and heating for the, the devices. That's, that's the discussion point that we want.
Any other discussion from the board on this matter?
Yeah. So the whole thing does not fit what that says authentic by nature. We all need energy, but unfortunately the branding of Antioch, it doesn't fit the branding. So therefore you can't put something in that doesn't fit the branding of Antioch. Doesn't fit the spirit of Antioch. You could throw a couple, two coke machines on the middle of the street, doesn't fit the branding or authentic by nature. That's the unfortunate part, we all need energy, we all agree with that. But authentic by nature was put as a branding to have the birds, the trees, the deer, stupid raccoons. But authentic by nature is Antioch. And you know, a famous guy, famous, I shouldn't say a famous dictator always said, when you take farmland away and you turn it into energy, corn Castro said that you don't want to give too much credit to a dictator, but that's basically what you're doing, you're taking a food source, farming, central farming land and turning it into energy or fuel for your car, fuel for your house. But this could go into township because they don't have a branding. We do.
Thank you, Rebecca, I'll segue it up.
Yes, one of my concerns, it hasn't come before the board before, I've been trying to follow along on all the planning and zoning meetings, watching them is I want to make sure that we are protected in terms of any sort of decommission plan, I really do think we need an environmental attorney who has experience in this area to look at it because those panels are very expensive, there's ramifications to those. And I really want somebody looking at it from Antioch's point of view with expertise, because I don't, I'm watching the planning and zoning, I'm trying to educate myself, but I really don't have enough information, yes or no, right now, from somebody who's on our side, I guess, looking out for our interest, I'd like to hear if the planning and zoning is interested in that.
Anyone else for discussion of this? All right, so I have a motion on the floor to send it back in a second, so take up, roll call to send it back.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
All right, six voting yes, motion carries. And anybody who is here for that does not have to stick around, but so we're about to get into the budget, so is every, is everybody here for that budget discussion? Okay. If you, if you're not and you, you want to go, now would be the time, because we're about to dive right into it, so. And actually, that, that would be the exit there, thank you. All right, so after a lot of work between Director Torres and Chief Gutshau and every director, many, many meetings, we have a first pass in budget. Present, I know there was some discussion last year, the board felt I guess, left out in the process, so we're trying to do a better, a better process so the board can see what's in each department's budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And then any questions, we will be voting on the budget in beginning of April, first meeting of April?
As soon as, as soon as you're ready to go, okay. Yeah.
So we're not here to vote on it today, we're just here to discuss it, kind of a roundtable forum, so I'll turn it over to finance departments.
Yeah. I just opened with a couple of quick remarks there.
Of course.
Just wanted to take, start by thanking everyone for taking the time tonight to join staff as we embarked on this important part of governance, our first presentation of the proposed village operational budget. This evening, you're to have the opportunity to review the result of what is the culmination of extensive efforts by our dedicated staff. Despite some of the challenges and difficult choices we faced when this, when the initial budgetary requests exceeded our anticipated revenues, want the board to know that staff quickly rose to the occasion. Through hard work, strategic decision-making and a shared dedication to fiscal responsibility, we had successfully reduced costs to bring forward a balanced budget without compromising the essential services our residents rely on. As we navigate tonight through some of the details of this draft operational budget, I know that we all recognize the hard work and choices that we made to control costs with focus on continuing to deliver the essential services of our community. So I hope that with your careful consideration and valuable input tonight, we can move forward to preparing the revised operational budget for the board, which will help guide the decision-making for the capital budget that staff is currently working on, and we hope to be able to bring forward to the board in the very near future. With that, Director Torres, load of yours.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor and Board. I just want to thank the department heads for the effort in getting items to me as needed. And I also want to recognize my department, who is, who they are a big deal in me putting this package together, especially Keith and Linda that worked, they got with me and always have been able to me and then the audience to get this package together. So tonight, the whole idea as village administrator Gutshau expressed, we had, we started this journey for a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit. And he gave us direction to go back and cut our budgets and do everything possible that at minimum we come in at a break event. And tonight we get to present a balanced budget and take you through a journey, I want to start out with an executive summary. The first thing I'm going to do in this journey is give you an update on twenty-three, twenty-four. We'll go through budget twenty-five. Each department has prepared a PowerPoint presentation, so I direct you to if you have any details on the department, each department head is going to have an opportunity tonight to go through their budget and you can ask them the question, I'm here to give you an overview and to show you finance department's budget, okay? So with that being said, we're going to look at the general fund tonight, we're starting out with revenues for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. That is where we are today. The overall twenty-four budget is at seventy-two percent. Up on the top, I showed you the budget you approved last fiscal year for this year. At seventeen million, we have thirteen as we stand right now, we are trending according to the ratio. And the asterisk in the red where it says includes property taxes for the tax levy, I wanted to show you on the right the police pension tax levy, which is included in revenue and it goes into the police pension fund as you approve according to the actuary. So I gave you a history there from year twenty-one to twenty-five, just as an FYI in that number that sits there. The remaining dollars in that, in that line is just to pay for payroll for the police and it's a very minimal amount, as you can see. The next slide are the expenses where we are today. You see the budget or a break even, almost a break even from last year, seventeen million. We had eleven million and we at sixty-five percent, that is a good number because as you saw the slide before, we are at seventy-two percent. So seeing the expenses that below the target ratio, that's, that's a good trend for us. On this page, I'm showing you a trend on all the revenues from twenty-one all the way to twenty-four, showing you trends or property taxes, which is the major source of revenue we receive. Other taxes, you see, see the governmental, the governmental is the income tax, the sales tax, the local use tax and so forth. Those are the top revenues, the top three is where our major sources of revenue come through. I'm providing you a trend from twenty-one through the fiscal year twenty-four budget. And then again, showing you where we are a year to date with the revenues for the general fund. Please stop me at any time with questions. On the next slide are the expenses, same trend, showing you from twenty-one all the way through fiscal year twenty-four, we start with personnel costs, as you can see, as in any company, personnel cost is the, will always be your highest percentage in a, in a company. And I also show you, I break down the employee benefits as well. And we go down to contracted services, the supplies and miscellaneous is anything in a category that doesn't fit in the above. The other financing sources, I want to highlight that because I think you as a board need to pay attention to that when you see it in any financial statement. Other financing sources are sometimes when you transfer from one fund to another, you have a process here where the general fund does transfer all of its utility tax to the capital fund to subsidize any general fund loans we've taken such as vehicle loans to cover for that cost. We also use it for capital, annual capital plans that we have. And in the last couple of years, we've been using four hundred thousand dollars of the utility tax to help out with the road program. And also sometimes you'll see that in other financing sources, we decide, and you will see that in this year's budget, once we talk about capital, when you start using other funding sources, which means you're using your fund balance, it is not your restricted, it is your liquid, it is your available fund balance that sits in that line item. And I want to highlight it because I think a lot of times only accounting people will look at that and see what's going on. But please keep an eye on that as a board. That's something you always should watch out for because you should be notified when, when staff is using funding balance or fund balance to subsidize a budget. I'm glad to say we're not doing that at this time. You will see it in the future only because you've already collected the bond money in last fiscal year and is sitting in your fund balance to, to pay the remaining of the park or any other project. So I just want to take time to highlight that one. Now we enter the budget twenty-five, any questions on twenty-four? Okay, the general fund twenty-five, so I want to go through some, I call housekeeping or highlight information that I think you need to pay attention to as we go through this journey. Number one, the village administrator position, the full package is still included in this budget. The second item we have is that direction has been given to remove the full-time position for the communication manager position. Also to remind you that we do have a transfer of the utility tax to the capital fund. I also implemented, I spoke about this last year when I came to the village, that we should have what's called a equipment replacement fund. What that fund is really intended for, it's what's called an internal service fund. It services all the other funds, that's why it's classified as an internal service fund because it serves vehicles, equipment, anything that you need to buy that comes out of either the water sewer fund. It's like a savings bucket so that you don't have to take loans for equipment or vehicles. The process really goes where you take the cost of all your vehicles, you, you depreciate them and you put the annual depreciation for the vehicles into that fund. Unfortunately, because we had to cut the budget by seven hundred thousand dollars, we decided to just, I decided, well, we'll just put something in this year for twenty, I put in twenty-five thousand dollars into this fund. But as we go on this journey and we enter the capital fund, it does not mean that we cannot get recommendation or direction to put more funds into the equipment replacement fund. Also, the new cannabis tax is for the local cannabis tax, we have the state and we have the local, this is the local. I have heard and we all in agreement staff that the board has wanted to possibly, I just put it as a placeholder for parks. Because if I do not put it in a placeholder or e-market in the budget, we're going to say, hey, we have a surplus of money that we want to use. So that's just waiting for the board to give us direction, what you would like to do with that money.
I just real quickly on the cannabis tax, in the budget document here, there's two cannabis taxes, as you said, the local and the state. One of them is showing like twenty-one thousand dollars and then the other one is showing estimated income of a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. I since my time is limited tonight, unfortunately, I would like to suggest to the board that both of those get earmarked for parks. Because if you have a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars coming in for, you can, you can use that to bond over to, to do some significant stuff in parks. So there, there, there's just two want to make sure we know there's two taxes in there for the cannabis and two sources of income. One's small, one's big.
Yes, and we'll see that if the slides come another, I identify them. I'm not, yes, sorry.
I just wanted to make a statement, it's not a question. I have a hard time taking all of the tax money that we get from the cannabis and giving it to parks. I want parks as much as everybody else does. But this is a new revenue source for us. I know when the, years ago, when the Walmart was brand new to us, we took a quarter of a percent and gave it to downtown. And that money that we're using for the grants is coming out of that. I, I really don't want to handcuff us with that money for just parks. We don't know what's going to happen, look what happened with COVID. We don't know what emergencies can hit us, we have no idea. So I don't have a problem with giving a percentage of a percent or a percent to parks, but I do not want to prioritize so we can't do anything. I really like the idea of building parks, I want that more than anything. We have to be a little physically responsible, we don't know what's going to happen, we have no idea, nobody's got a crystal ball. So I'd really like to revisit this and possibly go with a percentage and not all of that.
Yeah, dedicate some to public works.
We have, we have capital projects and that's for another discussion, I know. But it's a lot of money.
I have a question about that in that regard too. I mean, you're talking about a percentage. If staff works it a different way and comes up with a a baseline number, say, okay, they say the first hundred thousand or whatever is going to go towards parks, is that also a viable option to the board where, you know, if we know we're getting two forty or whatever, we think we may get a first amount goes into that, so they could plan on the park side of it, or you'd rather have a percentage than a dollar amount?
Well, a percentage may give the parks more money because we don't know what it's going to be.
And I think for the future discussions, we should have some options, but before, because when we started with our, down the path of the gambling money, we were going to be getting, we were told a little two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand. And if you look in these documents here, it's over four hundred thousand dollars now. So there money's, there's going to be more money than what we, we think there is, and we need to come up with a plan that, that does pay for the parks, because if we just say all the money is just going to go in the general fund, it will get washed out somewhere, roads or, or somewhere else.
Just important note for purposes tonight, although it says parks up there, that's not where the funds have been directly earmarked for. So they just had to place it as a placeholder so it would keep the budget revenue expenditure neutral. It wouldn't be absorbed into the operational expenses, so it's completely, it's prerogative to give us direction of where they'd like to see those and we can come leave with some different recommendations of how other communities perhaps are using it.
Makes sense to give a percentage to people who've got to deal with administrator. The police have to deal with the situation. So they might have to get more resources with Narcan and whatnot going down the road. I would like to see some of that go towards education and Narcan.
I agree with trustee Peterson, that was one of my big takeaways as we had talked about this and parks are important, but I also see now that so many other things have been cut in this budget and I'm afraid if everything goes to parks and we do have emergencies, I see that public works has had to cut sidewalks and roads and important thing, among other things in here, I'd rather have that if it can go in the general fund and just a percentage to parks, so if we can spend more on parks, great, but if we have other things that need our, you know, our money, I think it should go for that, so I agree with trustee Peterson on that.
Not it?
Yeah.
We're good?
Good.
Okay, the next item is the COLA increases. I spoke to my network of people and looked into the average of what is out there for the COLA increases. The state gave us a five percent COLA increase for cost of living for the property taxes. I also added a five point five percent average for this, it includes the COLA and the step increases for the union, I know that we're in the process of you know, negotiations, so those are not silent numbers. I just did, took my best guess in my experience and said where we could be in a safe place that this budget is reasonable for the board. And that's why I used that number. There's that word, the use of fund balance, that's where you would see that on the, on the funding sources, other funding sources in the general fund. And the reason I have that is because all those funds have been collected, most of them in prior budget years, which means they're sitting in your fund balance. So what will happen is, once we complete this budget process, it doesn't affect the bottom line to the budget, it won't. What's going to happen is I will enter the expenses for all those use of fund balance, the revenue and expense, and the net effect will be zero. But I still need to highlight it as your finance director to let you know, I'm working on these things, we're going to have capital planning meeting and at that time I will know what direction we're going to go. I know I've been working with Dennis and staff and making sure that I can provide you updated numbers for the park project. So that's what that funding sources is, all those funds are for the major capital projects that we discussed in November. Our next meeting will include those capital projects to give you an update and our annual capital projects. So that's why I put there to be continued at the capital planning meeting. For insurance purposes, we put a number of twenty percent. We could either move it up at your direction, move it down or we, we staff things, but I think that that's a good starting number for the insurance. At the bottom, I wanted to show you the increases on the unemployment state tax. You'll see that on some of the lines in the budget, you'll see a crazy outrageous percentage for the unemployment tax. Understand that even though that percentage says forty-two percent, it will be forty-two percent of two thousand dollars. So the amount is minimal, the dollar amount, even though percentage is high, the dollar amount, it's not. And the same thing for IMRF. We do not pay a lot of IMRF as I seen in other communities in the IMRF cost for the village. This village has an outstanding and exceptional rate in IMRF. I have never seen a rate like ours in my over than twenty years in government. So I'm proud to see come to a community that is not double digits, it's going up a little bit and that's because as people retire, that number will increase. And as the market does better, the market, the rate will go down, okay? So just want to highlight that and show you the history. Here I'm giving you for twenty-five, I'm taking you from near twenty all the way to where we're projecting in twenty-five. And I'm highlighting all the major sources of revenue. As you can see, the property taxes from one end to the other has had increased and still even being a, a non-home rule community, as you can see to the right, those percentages have been three percent, even though CPI last year was seven percent. And sometimes you see in the newspaper that is twenty-three percent, it's me trying to capture the new construction. So there in twenty-three, twenty-four, the anticipation is that there's new construction in there and you'll read in the newspaper, oh, you know, it's twenty-something percent eighteen, no, look at the numbers, they're not. So that's something to, to share with you, the income tax has its ups and downs. Sales tax is trending, staying stable. I didn't do much of the increases because I see a very steady trend. The utility tax has been decreasing, it is the natural gas tax that is going down. If you see at the bottom, the cannabis use tax, I gave you If you see at the bottom, the cannabis use tax, I gave you the history for that. And then I also wrote down the cannabis tax too, for your observation that we are anticipating a minimum of one twenty five. Any questions on this slide?
On the sales tax, um, the government, the governor just proposed that they do away with the, some of the sales taxes that directly impact the local communities. Um, are we keeping an eye on that?
Yeah, definitely, yeah. And you remember, I don't know if, if the board was aware a couple of years back, um, the state came out with some deduction on the distribution. What usually happens is, there's a deduction on distribution, but they find some other way for us to make up the money for the local municipalities, so I'm not concerned about that. Okay, the next one is twenty five. Here are the revenues. Well, I made a comparison, as you can see, um, non-departmental, the decrease in that fourteen percent is because we had the grant, the SNC grant. The collection for last year, so that affects the revenues, so there's nothing wrong with that. That is pretty consistent. If you see the actual twenty three is pretty close to twenty five. And the reason for your twenty five going down is really is that utility tax. Other than that, you know, things are trending. It, it all really depends on how many permits you issue, how many fines you get. And um, and I know parks had some decrease and Mary could go through that during her budget. The community development, we did a restructuring in that department, which is economic development is doing a lot of the special events. It's taking that budget, so we are getting some reimbursements for those activities. And that's what um, we're getting sponsorships and donations for those special events, and that's why you see that increase. Any questions on this slide? The expenses. So you can see that the bottom line, uh, your expenses, we have a, a negative ten percent. We did some cuts. Um, we lost, we don't have, we, we took out one position, so that's one of the reasons why. And we made some conservative cuts, things that, you know, we can. As you can see in actual twenty two and twenty three, I wanna highlight that. So we bring your balanced budget, and that's just like, that's the story we think is gonna happen in the new year. But what ends up happening most of the time I see is, you never really spend all that money. The expenses never. Um, you never complete your full budget and spend it, so you can see, you know, from twenty one, we had a one point one surplus in the general fund. We jumped in twenty three to two point two. The projects or things that don't get done that affect that line, I don't. And we have a, a, a balanced budget right now for twenty five, we're in a surplus of just six thousand six hundred. Any questions? No? Okay. So here, I wanted to show you the expenses by category. Um, this question comes up, the bottom line is still the same. But it shows you where all your expenses are, with personnel, employee benefit, contractual services, supplies and material. Control assets is equipment like IT, and there's your other financing sources. And we do have a line for contingency, so I show you the dollar amount, and then I show you the percentage change on the right. And it's pretty consistent.
Only three percent.
And then I show you and, and a chart there where you can see um how it's broken down.
Can you go back to that for a second?
Sure.
There's a lot of information trying to gather there.
Yeah, the next slide, so sort of in detail. I just want to show you the pie, enlarges pie pieces, the personnel employee costs.
Those personnel employee costs, where's the, the greatest personnel employee costs coming from?
Well, you have the, the salaries is.
Is it, is it the finance department? Is it the public works?
It's the police department.
Okay. So they're getting majority of the budget?
Yeah. Okay. It's generally around half.
That's correct.
Mm hmm.
Always happening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's generally around half.
Yeah.
And there I show you the trends, how they increasing. Twenty five, we cut the positions. The benefits insurance is going on, and that all really depends every year. We can't estimate what that is. Now we go to the water sewer. I'll give you um an update on the water sewer fund. The water sewer fund is really travels um pretty consistent. Um, it almost break, even makes sometimes um a little bit of surplus. But in the horizon, as um I boarded up in our staff meetings, that we probably have to start thinking about um a rate study. Typically, you do a rate study every five years. This community hasn't done it in over ten years. And the concern is that your pipes, your infrastructure is deteriorating. And that it's gonna come a time where everything goes bad. Hopefully it doesn't, but I've seen in the communities who have failed to, to stay with the consistency of a increase because it is an enterprise fund, um, it's supposed to subsidize the expenses to fees, to use of fees, that's why it is a enterprise fund. But we haven't done a study in over ten years. I went to a community, it had been more than thirty years, and they had to increase the water rates by eighty eight percent, and that's really unfair to the residents. At the same time, the residents are using the system. Uh, we are going to have um some lead education and upgrading that we need to do. We need to find the sources for that, and right now, when you have a fund that's just breaking even, it's time for us to think about a rate study, so I just wanted to bring that up, okay?
Thank you. I've been begging for that for a while.
I also, I'm also presenting um the history for the village from twenty one all the way to fiscal, our year-to-date fiscal year. We're doing pretty good. The revenues are at sixty nine percent. So I take you from twenty one to year-to-date, showing you where are we at the percentage. Showing you the, the use of fees. We have um one more billing that'll come up, a billing and a half. So that number on the top right, the three point seven, will increase significantly. We on a cruel basis, the inner fund, the um water sewer fund is an enterprise fund. It is in a cruel basis, is not cash basis. So we don't get to see those numbers, so maybe when we start building and we take and we do all the audit entries to bring the village to what we actually received. Um, here are the costs. As you can see, it's under the revenue, which is great, is below the target we want for the, for the revenues. And a part of that is to, to, you know, things are just stable right now.
Mary, you have a question? Mary, you have a question?
No, go ahead, sorry.
Hey, oh, yeah, to come back.
I'm fine, I have five more minutes.
This is budget twenty five water sewer. That's a simple, that's my favorite fund, it's easy. Here is like budget twenty five. We see um a decrease because some of the expenses that we had, well, those sorts of revenues, we not take, we're not having the grant that we thought for project we had last year. So that's why you see uh negative thirty three percent, but that's irrelevant because it's a grant that was supposed to pay. Or an expenditure, if you can see the top and the bottom, they equal. It's a negative, the revenue went down, we took out the grant, it's not gonna happen, and we took out the expense. But other than that, it's a very frugal budget, and it's very consistent. Dennis does a good job with not increasing. Thank you. All right, now we have the other vis, I wanna touch a little bit um on the business districts and the tips. These, these districts are specifically used for certain items and things um that the village has voted on by ordinance. So here we have the East Business District. On the top, the property tax one point one million, and at the bottom, we have the one point five. That, right now, the East Business District is a break even because the business district is using all its funding to pay part of bond twenty two that you issued last year. That's the only expense in this fund. Then we have the Central Business District. The Central Business District pays also part of the um, the bond twenty two. And as of this year, we're starting to see a trend to um have a surplus on that, um, which is not earmarked for anything. So we are showing a surplus for the next budget year, which you could allocate the money for other things, incentives, business incentives. So you have the availability for twenty five to add. I, at this time, I don't have anything other than the debt that's paying for bond twenty two. But that, 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 those monies are available if you choose to do other items.
And how much money is that there?
Right, four hundred and eighteen thousand.
Okay, so that's the other financing usage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then the, the tip, your boil and tip stays consistently at a hundred thousand. Nothing's been happening the last couple of years regarding to expenses. I just take out the funding that we need for the auditors to make sure we're in compliance with the tip. So you have like almost a hundred thousand for twenty five to, if you choose to use those funds or something. This is the corporate center. This, this has, um, we pay handy foil and we pay Fisher their portion of this district. So this one is um, just has a negative this year of one thousand, but that will come out of his fund balance. I really cannot overestimate those property taxes, and we do have some a thousand bucks in the fund balance to pay for the audit. But this fund is also used to pay for the incentives that you have agreed to previously. Other funds, I just wanna touch slightly on these funds. We have the depot fund. That is a fund that Dennis manages, is used for any items in that, that section that needs upgrading. He managed public safety, is the police department. And then we have the drug forfeiture that by law, the police department will use the funds accordingly. We have the two forty seven fund, which is the motor fuel tax fund, and that is strictly for road program. We are using that amount plus four hundred thousand dollars on the utility tax to do the motor fuel tax program this year. And the three fifty fund is the um, our money. That money is sitting there waiting for us to earmark it this year legally by December. I need to let the state know what we are going to use that one point nine million for. The park infrastructure, those are just fees we get annually. And then the debt service fund, the debt service fund right now is bond money that's sitting there, and any payment for the bond and projects that are going to be made. In the nine hundred and the nine fifty three fund, it's not really funds that we use. This is, those are fiduciary funds. All we do is manage it, post it entries, and someone else takes care of it for us. So that's why I don't put those numbers in there.
Do we have tentative plans for the American Rescue Fund, the one point nine million or?
Yes, we do.
Open space.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the depot parking, that, does that run a deficit every year?
Well, we, yeah, well, we put the mon, money in there, but it has a lot of money in the fund balance, and you have to use it specifically for that.
Okay, do it though. I've noticed when I go over there, there's like a, a fraction of cars that used to be there.
Rider ships way down. Cut the schedule.
Jen, I have a question. What did you say the one point nine million was geared for?
The open space project.
Okay.
So I wanted to give you a whole picture of the financials here for the village. It gives you the total of all the revenues. It gives you the totals to get all the expenditures. It tells you the percentage of the total budget, the percentage of revenues, expenses. And the two items that we're gonna be using fund balance for this year would just be the depot and the corporate center. Again, at the bottom, you can see the equipment replacement fund, twenty five thousand dollars thus far that we earmarked. Any questions?
Can you go back to that last slide?
Sure.
And then I'll get out everybody's hair and stop slowing you down. Um, you say operating funds of forty five million and um expenditures of forty four million, but our, all the way back through, it was showing like sixteen million is our, is our budget.
Because that was the general fund, see at the top, see.
Okay.
Yeah, what I did is I combined your cover page. You had to look at each fund individually to see what the surplus is. As you can see, the general fund has a six thousand six hundred and twenty dollar surplus. Last year, the year before last, we had just seventeen, and the surplus came out at two million because we didn't do some project.
So if I'm looking at this, the Water Works and Sewerage Fund, which is enterprise, has a seventy thousand dollar surplus. Um, we're gonna be, our budget's basically gonna be forty five million then, is what you're telling me?
And the funds that are operating, all those funds we use to operate.
With a surplus of eight hundred sixty five thousand dollars.
The bottom numbers are numbers that we can't use for operating.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just looking at the, what the final impact is. All right, thank you, Zaya.
Any other questions? Well, this is the best budget, finance. Yeah, it's a five percent increases because of personnel, and we had um someone added to family insurance. That's what my increase is. That's it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Now it's Laurie's turn.
Um, before we get into departments, um, I want to think, I got three to five in the break and grab all some food that staff got for everybody, so. Probably grab that now and then join the department reports. If anybody else is here, feel free to tell yourself. Where are you?
Yeah, I'm up.
All right, Laurie's turn. Last in session.
Okay. There's the clerk's office. I don't have much, and I joked that I was gonna get a confetti cannon to throw shredded paper at everybody. It's really with the move to the new village hall, we're gonna have to consolidate all of our records. Get rid of what we can and scan in what we can, so that's a majority of the budget for this year. Uh, under the admin budget, we're proposing, if I'm gonna go to the next one. We're proposing um an online HR solution that will allow applicants for employment to apply online. And it's a software module that would track the applicants, uh, go through screening processes. Um, it would automate processes, customize them, so they get routed to the hiring manager. Uh, and then it works into an onboarding process for the selected candidates. There's also an option for performance review module at some point, if that's something that um we choose to do if we like the software. Yes.
Would that be for summer help, everyone's police, everything?
Yes.
So anything that.
Everyone, not police, they go through their own process through the uh Police and Fire Commission, but yes, seasonal employees as well as full-time and part-time employees. Okay, any questions?
All right. Jim Moran.
Excellent. So the first part, I'll be presenting on the elected officials portion, the administration and communications parts of the budget. So the elected officials portion of the budget.
I guess the biggest part was the big picture.
So we trimmed thi, this part of the budget just through um budget efficiencies, uh, budgeting, a little closer to uh year, year-to-date expenditure, expenditures of the previous year. That sort of thing. We're able to eliminate about nineteen thousand dollars out of the budget compared to last year's budget. Uh, one of the things I wanted to highlight in here, probably the most visible portion of this budget, this budget, those are the fun things like meetings and uh, business cards and things like that, but also the downtown beautification line item, uh, which we kept the same as this previous year. Which I, I think we will have spent the full line item this year, so we decided to keep that the same uh moving forward into uh the next fiscal year. So it's, it's real short part of the budget. The, the next page, uh, the administration. Again, a lot of the expenses um were around the same fiscal year to fiscal year. Uh, some of the bigger increases that we saw were the engineering services. Um, just by staff changes, um, we'll need to rely on outsourced engineering services a little, little bit more. So we, we thought a conservative estimate would be about a five thousand dollar increase to that line item. Also our legal services, um, our prosecution, uh, which their prosecution services that they have um went up by five percent. That's an, an agreement that we have on that, and um, so that, that's part of this line item as well. And then on the uh, the next page for communication. And then on the uh the next page for communications, a a lot of the line items in here, so the communications manager role. Uh, we took out the funding for that and all the associated um employee expenses that go with that um are out of this budget. One of the things that this does include is um thirty thousand dollars for contract communications help, mostly around social media. Uh, social media, as you guys know, is a very um visible way that we, and it's an effective way that we communicate with our residents. So that is an area that um we we thought would be best served if we brought some help onboard to to make sure we stay on top of that. Um, a lot of the other communications portion of the budget that was in the twenty four budget has been moved into the economic development and special events. So the concerts and that sort of thing that was moved into my budget this past year is now under economic development. Uh, we also removed, there's a line item in here that was a a holdover from when we did some of the golf signs. Um, I had ten thousand dollars budgeted this year in case we wanted to do another sign or any sort of sort of public art. And that didn't get used this year, uh so we decided to eliminate that line item moving into next fiscal year. And then this also funds uh the village wide resident uh newsletter that will be mailed home twice a year. And then again, like I mentioned, our contract social media call.
Questions, servants? All right.
All right. So the the major difference for my budget um this coming year that's proposed is under our phone system. Unfortunately, the received notification that um the system that we're on is end of life as of December thirty first. Typically in years past or in decades past, you could still use a system. This is all license based. So at the end of this year, we cannot expand our system at all unless we front load a whole bunch of licenses. Because we wouldn't be able to add a voicemail box, an extension. Um, and while we could do that, we also will not get any updates on the system. And um any sort of equipment or replacements, we would be going through third party resellers at that point. On eBay or getting refurbished. And it just that it doesn't lead to the redundancy and uh stability that I think we need to have as a village. And yes. Five years ago, um so definitely shouldn't be at the end of its life. But five years ago, we did not know, uh Mitel has decided to focus on enterprise solutions. Uh, unfortunately, those are six figure solutions. Um, and the yearly maintenance fees on them are ten thousand and above. Uh, so what is proposed is that we go with the cloud solution, a Ring Central advantage. We'll be looking at all these different. Um, so in here is under phone system support is ten thousand. That is the implementation fee that is um what is required to migrate to it. Uh, these are just estimates based on the conversations I've had um with a couple of the vendors uh to get budgetary proposals. Um, and then.
A lot of a lot of people are getting rid of the phone itself and just doing software.
And that's what this would be.
This would be so like a Cisco, Cisco Jabber or a Teams base, because we're we're going over to Teams.
Well, unfortunate.
Do adventure.
Teams is not auto attendant and worker friendly. Uh, so for a lot of our um needs, it would necessarily work for the call routing that we need for for some of it. Uh, but it is definitely something that we will, we can look at when we go out.
Employees, so transferring calls through Teams.
Transferring calls for the auto attendant portion. But again, it'd be, that is, that is a hosted solution. So I would definitely look at that Teams, Zoom actually has a solution.
And they're Cisco, Cisco, we're on Cisco right now, which is basically if you left that phone, then you get phones wherever you sit.
Right, because most of them come with um a app for your phone, for your cell phone. So that we can actually schedule it to be during business hours, it rings, off hours, it doesn't ring. So employees still can have that downtime. Um, so there there's a lot of different features and a lot of different options that we will look at. Uh, so also as part of it then, under the software licensing and updates is the partial year with the anticipation of hopefully implementing it through um just half the year towards December. Um, but unfortunately, that's thirteen thousand two hundred. So we are looking at a significant annual expense for this. We can look at on premise, but again, that is a large upfront. And I am looking at how our infrastructure is going to look as we move to Skidmore and the build out of the public works facility. And that a cloud solution actually makes a lot more sense because we are no longer going to be connected via fiber as we are now. Uh, so those that is the the expense that is in this budget.
So is is all the hardware stays and it's just the software that's being updated? Or we're getting all the phones as well then or?
So if we went with Ring Central, it would depend on the vendor that we choose to go with. Some of them, we can, you know, kill shake phones as part of it. Ring Central is the Mitel, they've been purchased, uh Mitel purchased Ring Central. And that's where they're kind of, they're eliminating their um small and medium business on premise solutions, pushing people to Ring Central. So with them, we could use our existing phones. So it would just be what we decide best fits us. There will be some cost savings with, we won't have the phone lines. We can eliminate some of the fax lines because they do a faxing service through here. Uh, so there will be a little bit of of other line items that we will be able to eliminate. So that's the uh the benefits of of a different, you know, phone system and and a cloud access. Um, you know, we'll always be able to keep up on the technology. We shouldn't be able to, we shouldn't have to be putting out on Facebook. Our internet is down, so our phones are down because we can have it on our cell phones um to ring us. So it will truly be able to have a more disaster recovery and seamless integration by having a cloud solution.
Questions? Thank you.
Yes, I should touch on this. So I'm just looking forward to the Skidmore uh development and moving into there. Uh, there were some items that we need to think of that is outside of what a bid proposal would be. And that would be moving the strike guard, the lightning detection system right now, the base is here. Uh, so we would be looking at moving that over to Skidmore. Uh, we would be moving the security cameras. We would install access controls like we have at the police department and at Metro. And what we will have um eventually at the park. Uh, we will look at conference room technology, the needs of of that. And then looking at the costs associated with the network communications between the facilities. And then since we are going to a a little bit learn, uh we will no longer have that fiber connection. We're looking at the server infrastructure, which would also serve right now. Everything is at the police department and we're connected over there via fiber. Um, by separating the infrastructure, we'll uh the seizure compliance becomes a lot easier. Uh, separating police completely from village hall and the um the rest of the village. But also it can serve as a backup and disaster recovery because if their servers go down, they can automatically bail over to the village hall servers and vice versa. So um where that's all the things that we we've identified so far um as the additional expenses for Skidmore.
All right, that's officially, that was it. All right, uh Parks, Director Wilson.
So Parks and Rec are um the next slide, Zaya. These are some of our larger expenditures throughout that are typical for us. Um, the pool, four thousand, printing of our brochure twice a year, printing and design, fourteen. Uh, credit card processing, thirteen thousand a year, portlets in the parks, almost twelve thousand a year. And but those are um standard. And then down below the summer day camp bussing, we spend almost one twelve thousand five hundred. Um, that is done, we uh get it through D thirty four. And then the North Pole expense, that's another big expense. But those bottom two expenses are covered with revenues. But just to let you know, those are, these are some of our high end expenses that we have in our department. Um, the our two best producing programs, Camp Crayon is the revenues versus expenses and Summer Day Camp. You got the almost, what is it? Twenty thousand and then Day Camp sixteen thousand or so. We do, we do watch all, most of our programs don't run unless it, um, they don't go unless we uh break even and or make a little bit of revenue. And then these are our potentials, something for you to think about. Um, I would say the top three going forward that we need to consider for our capital, uh pickleball courts, two hundred, design and engineer Centennial Park. And with that, I do want to say, I know um the mayor and I have spoken about it. Now that we have our destination park across the street, um we can pull back Centennial and not make it that destination. Make it, bring it back to more of a town, a neighborhood park. So it won't cost as much because we don't need that massive of a structure to suffice as the uh destination park for people. And then just the master planning of the sawmill improvements.
Questions?
Question of Parks. Yes, I do. Um, so you can keep like baseball fields over there at Centennial? Yes. And not? We were, no, it's not going to be, it was never going to be just all playground. But just this, we had envisioned a big, all inclusive, big playground, million dollar playground. But we don't need that now because we have it across the street. Okay. But going forward, all playgrounds, um you know, will be inclusive. No more wood chips, you know. You're right, right. ADA compliant, yes.
The um, those those three items you showed there, pick of all, that's not in your budget, correct?
That's no, not in.
That would only be if we assign capital funding to those project. Is there anything in your budget for any improvements or capital work?
Well, it's in Parks Maintenance, it's it's just like we we keep money in for um.
You know what that is?
Broken swings.
I know.
Less than ten thousand dollars.
So that's what, that's what I saw.
Five or six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But there there's also a line item in my budget for Parks Maintenance.
Yeah, I saw that. That's why I was, I was, when I was going through, I was trying to, it just didn't seem like enough.
Mary, on the pickleball courts, is that resourcing existing um for the two hundred?
That's funny, I so I had emailed Doug saying, hey, I'm going into a budget meeting, give me exactly. I said, what would it cost? Because we did get, I can show you pictures, um Tanner had just taken pictures. Over the winter, our pickleball, our tennis courts have really suffered. And I asked Doug, I said, what is it to dig up the four courts, put, you know, new courts, new uh fencing and all that? And he said three hundred and fifty thousand. They all, uh, Centennial and Jensen both have to be dug up and re reformed.
Thank you.
Speaking clean.
Um, all right, Director Garrigan.
Yeah, yes, thank you. Um, with respect to some of our goals for the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year, um obviously, what we're, as we proceed with the public hearing process for the tip uh for the brown property or marketplace property, as we come to the conclusion of that public process, uh we anticipate working with um the developer um uh a verges on a development agreement. Uh, as you well know, the brown property, Brown LLC property will be a fairly complicated property. Um, it will be potentially a mixed use property, but the first component will be commercial. So we anticipate working with the development agreement as concurrent with the proposed tip uh for the for the eighty two acres. Uh, in addition, we'll continue to work with the verges on uh continued commercial development. As you well know, I think uh the marketplace property uh has been one of our goals in our plans for the past three, four years. And this takes, it shows you now that we're seeing real traction and potential interest in that property, how long sometimes development takes to get actual traction. But with the Kia development, we're seeing real interest now in that property. Uh, we'll continue to see new entitlements, uh commercial entitlements, hopefully in the next six months, maybe potentially two or three months. Uh, and some of the commercial outlots of that property. So one of our major goals this year is to see the fruition of some of the commercial outlots on the um brown property. We also had a chance to actually meet with Lalar Homes on the final plat for uh phase four of the Clubland, it's about to be recorded. We've been working with Lalar Homes on starting on this public improvements of that three hundred forty seven uh unit development. That should be starting uh in the spring. You'll probably see some activity out there uh this spring with regards to moving dirt and incorporating some public improvements, i.e. roadways and uh public gum and um san- sanitary and water. In addition, uh one of our goals is to concede the entitlement of second essential property, that's a property on Route fifty nine to South Ace, Hubbard Development. We're working on it, the house with Hubbard Development, as I've already uh highlighted. But we're hoping to see the construction, starting construction of that new uh commercial development, hopefully sometime this summer. Uh entitlement uh this spring. Um, they should be submitting their applications within the next few weeks. Next slide, uh with regards to other prop goals we have, uh we've worked with property owners. Uh, we've had a chance to um meet with the mayor on some opportunities for some, there are some, I think strategically important op parcels. There are around on the periphery of Antioch that I think are important to see um that that they're annexed just for kind of solidifying our boundaries. So staff um has highlighted some of these properties, to contact the owners and try to advise some of these important properties to actually annex, get them built to Antioch for strategic um economic purposes in in order to solidify our boundaries. Uh, another aspect of our goals is we think there's an opportunity um to update our site plan interview. Uh, when we started, we actually did not have, I started, we did not actually have a site plan interview ordinance. I think there's an opportunity, um that the ordinance was actually approved almost eight years ago. So I think there's an opportunity this year to kind of provide some refinement to that ordinance and modify it to maybe address the new commercial interests that exist in Village of Antioch. Uh, in addition, there's been some discussion, maybe frustration about uh some of the um building conditions or the appearance of some of our downtown buildings along Main Street. Uh, I discussed before, but I think there's an opportunity to uh look at creating an architectural review committee uh to kind of work with the village board uh on maybe uh adding some additional guidelines to uh promote better better design in our downtown and more more refinement in uh some of the uh proposed projects that come through our downtown as interest continues in our historic downtown. Next slide, uh we'd like to also continue our facade program. As you'll see that we've identified approximately a hundred fifty thousand dollars in our line item for the facade program. I've been working with local uh architect uh who's expressed, um he's been working with several potential building owners who have expressed interest in coming in with a major facades this year. I think that we've made tremendous progress on on the west side of Main Street. I think the east side of Main Street, some of the buildings there are still challenged. So we're we're hoping to work with some of those building owners uh on in uh implementing the facade program. I know P M N L Theater, hopefully will be coming in with their new phase and continuing finishing their uh long term facade pro- programs. Um, in addition, we'd like to have an opportunity to create some new downtown sign guidelines. We've made a lot of progress in some of our new signage downtown. We'd like to continue that success and incorporate some downtown sign guidelines to continue to promote more sensitive uh historically con- se- sensitive context uh sign designs for our downtown. We also like to work with, uh we've had discussions, good discussions with Public Works. Uh, we like to work with them, again, depending on some of the budgetary challenges. On a phased um streetscape plan, as you all know, several years ago, Lakota came in with a really a love, beautiful plan for streetscape improvements. Unfortunately, those were, the the numbers were huge, uh over six million dollar endeavor. We are clearly not in a position to finance that. But we think there's some opportunities to make some limited streetscape improvements and have a phased plan. So we'd like to work uh with uh uh Public Works on that uh this year, at least coming with a plan. We're also like to work with the garden club, as you know, we made some progress on the top street landscaping last year. We'd like to continue to work with the garden club um on continuing some of that beautification along top street. Like we believe there's still continued opportunities to beautify some of the landscape islands at a very, very limited cost. Um, and as as those natural plantings become more mature each year, I think you'll see a softening and a beautification of uh uh of top street and top street parking lot. Uh, in addition, as I've already discussed, one of our major goals here is to host a downtown envisioning. We've discussed as we proceed to moving into our new facility, uh hopefully next year. Um, I think there'll be more and more interest and more and more discussion of what we do with this site. What are the info opportunities uh for the existing site? What are the info opportunities, uh, for the existing site? We think there's some downtown, uh, visioning opportunities, so we budgeted some money, start that discussion with the village board to bring in some, um, some designer, urban designers to have that, start that discussion, come up with some creative concepts and hopefully come up with a consensus. Uh, but I also like to work, uh, with some areas around the Antioch Plaza, as you know, Antioch Plaza is, has been challenged for many years. Um, the actual lease for Piggly Wiggly is actually up this year. Um, so we think there's an opportunity to start discussion about how we can improve that property, how we can see a revitalization of the Antioch Plaza property. Uh, so we'd like to start that discussion. I've had some very preliminary discussions with the owner of that property and they do, they've expressed some interest in that. And also, uh, work with the Historic Preservation Commission on some new, new landmarks. Uh, and also we're working potentially on working with the Natural Register, potential creating a down, National Register Downtown District. So that's something I've been working with, uh, Landmarks Illinois on, and I'm hoping we'll have, so I'll have additional time to work on an actual formal application. And I, there's Landmarks Illinois seemed to be very positive that, um, downtown Antioch would potentially be eligible for a National Register, uh, Historic District, which would bring additional prestige, uh, and recognition to our historic downtown.
All right. All right, um. Mark Searle.
Yeah, so, um, this presentation and budget-wise is more focused on the special events part of it, just because the economics of all of it, doesn't have a ton in the budget right now, we're just kind of still trying to figure out ways that we can, um, utilize incentives and stuff. There was a two hundred thousand dollar placeholder in there from years past, uh, some of it wasn't used. So we're looking at, instead of really handcuffing two hundred thousand dollars in the budget, to look at ways that we can still, you know, still have incentive-based, um, programs out there for the businesses and try to obviously help businesses that are here and also, um, try to bring in new business. But, um, we're looking at kind of a new way with Zeta to be able to have funds available, but not be constraining us to that two hundred thousand only be able to be used for the incentive part of it. So that was a little bit of a, of a budget cut, just for right now, just because we needed to try to make it to that, um, even operating budget. So as far as the special events side of it goes, um, one of the concerns was how could we, we can, uh, add to our programming for the summer time to have our programming not stop early August, but continue on into September. And so we've added some new concert dates for Thursday nights, uh, which has been, obviously every year it's getting bigger and bigger, averaging close to a thousand people per week. So that's something we hope to continue to do. Um, we've added some new events, uh, Shamrock Shuffle, which is coming up in a couple of weeks, Small Town Smokeout, which will be a large-scale barbecue competition downtown, um, as well as things like the Antioch Goes Tours like that. And we're still going to continue to try to, um, revisit what the events are doing, what's working, what's not working, and continue to, uh, change those as we go. Um, as far as the, uh, budget part of it this year, so, um, we, I kind of looked at a way to try to have it where it was essentially a cost-neutral budget from the standpoint of the bands. Uh, and so we brought in a, kind of a different program for sponsoring this year. Uh, so our total expenses for all the, the bands, the competitions, the, the different events, uh, the budget expense-wise was around one hundred ninety thousand dollars, uh, with local sponsorship and then projected revenue, um, we're looking at bringing in just over two hundred thousand dollars to make all those events essentially not an impact on the budget, but in turn providing amenities to the community, but at the same time having, uh, revenue there due to the use or, or income there to go use in the budget for, for more operating stuff as opposed to just, uh, the events itself. Some of the goals for two thousand twenty-four from the event side of it is to, to continue to evaluate existing events. Um, you know, there's certain ones we've had here for a long time that have done really, really well, but we want to continue to make sure we're keeping up front, um, such as things, you know, like the Wine Walk, do we need to look at the Wine Walk and is it still continuing to work? We don't want to get to a point where it's no longer relevant and then all of a sudden we're kind of, um, sitting there with a deficit in the revenue side of it. Also, things like the Farmer's Market, um, for instance, on a fantastic job in the last few years, trying to really get that going. Um, it still hasn't taken off, I think, the way that everybody would like it to. So continue to evaluate, you know, those processes and see if with the new park, will that help? Uh, maybe changing location, having a softer per repeal, it's like that, will that, you know, continue to help? So, um, looking at some of those, um, as well as, uh, continue to, um, look at events that we can, we can provide, whether they're new or old, uh, to bring more people into the town, which will in turn be an amenity for the residents, but also help the businesses that are here that we, you know, hear the, um, it all too often that, you know, they're hurting downtown, right? So how can we continue to bring, uh, new people into the town? Um, is one of my issues, I want to start working more with, uh, neighboring communities as well as, um, really try to get some more highlight to Western Lake County. We're kind of out here, if you look at geographically, we're kind of out on an island and so, you know, go like Oz, Fox Lake, some of those areas that don't necessarily get a ton of the traffic that some of the other parts of Lake County do, how can we work as partners, uh, to really bring people in and maybe have more of, not co-op events, but events that can help, uh, you know, this whole western side of Lake County? Um, and then also to try, continue to, um, drive economic impact to the village through some participation with events and, and a revenue stream. So, um, looking at events as a revenue stream as opposed to just a simple cost. Uh, one of the things I wanted to bring up today, just to get ahead of it, was, obviously we have the park that's going to be opening soon and we have built this beautiful, uh, cafe building there and looking just for something to think about from the forward side of it is, what direction are we going to go into with that cafe, right? There's, it's a large expense, um, and, and how is that going to be operated? So there's a couple of options, either the village operates that, that building, right? Whether that's having our staff, um, you know, do food service, beverage service. Uh, to me, I look at that as a, as a big cost to the village, it's also very, um, it's, it's risky in the fact that how much use are you going to get out of the, the building? Um, for staffing-wise, depending on what we're going to offer, if they're going to offer alcohol or something like that, then that changes the demographic. It's no longer a pool concession stand where we can have, you know, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old kids there. It needs to now be bartended and maintained, but also getting into the bar business if we're going to have a liquor license and now we're having a liquor license. And so some of those things, uh, just from my standpoint, I, I think it makes a little bit more of a stretch as opposed to looking at the options of leasing out. Um, Paddock Lake has just opened up, um, a beer garden that they built and then did RFP out there to bring in vendors to, you basically, uh, manage and operate that facility, same thing, Lehman Mansion, um, Independence Grove in Libertyville, Kenosha has one called Pet Prime Springs. And so I would think that it makes the most sense to look at those options out there and there's really two options when it comes to that and that's going to be just a cost to rent it or is there a, or a, a percentage based off the sales of what that, um, expense will look like? Uh, right now, guessing what the revenue that could come out of that building is really going to be hard to do for right now. So I think a, a percentage-based, um, fee makes the most sense. But again, I, I want everybody to start thinking about this because we're going to be getting into, you know, a point very soon where we need to start to make that decision. Um, I would think that the three questions that we would need to ask from the board's standpoint is, um, you know, how, how is that operational use going to be done? Whether it's third-party or leasing or, um, village operating it, um, hours of operation? We need to have some expectations from the board of what we see as the hours of operation on that facility. Um, and also what seasonal expectations we're going to have. That building does have, um, you know, heat and air conditioning in it, um, but what are realistic expectations of using that property year-round? Is it going to be something that the board will like to see programming that's going on year-round and staff year-round? And so when we start to look at the point of if we're going to go outside of village staffing, if it's going to be an RFP for finding a vendor, um, we need to go answer those questions so we do an RFP that's appropriately delivered to, uh, applicants. So I did, that's kind of something that's a little bit down the road now, but it's going to be there before you know it.
Um, I, what, with Lehman Mansion, I know, I, I think at one point was if they were renting and then they, like, I, I know there was a switch, but I didn't, wasn't sure how.
Yeah, so it was done, the last contract before now, Chris from Barbecue Productions has the lease on that now. It used to be Bauer Catering. If Bauer Catering paid a simple flat rate, um, when barbecue productions took over the lease to it, they did it on a percentage base, um, and that, it seems to make the most sense for a business because, you know, it, let's say in the first year, we don't really know what to expect, they don't know what to expect. It's going to be hard to try to get somebody to do a long-term lease or, and might be my long-term is probably three years minimum, um, to do that with a lot of the questions in the air, right? And so they, they're currently on a percentage-based lease. Um, I talked to Chris from Barbecue Productions and, um, they, they are on five-year or five percent of their total sales tax. So most thing, from the restaurant side of it, thirty percent is typically a margin that they're going to make on, on revenue, right? So out of a dollar, they're making thirty cents every time they make it. So something like five percent is going to impact them, but it's not, it's not going to, you know, kill them. If there are new businesses coming in, um, it could be really, really difficult to say it's going to be sixty thousand dollars a year. And in the first year, they make a hundred thousand in, in total, you know, revenue, but really there's only thirty thousand that's left over. So they would be in the deficit in the first year, so. Any questions on that part of it? Just that, I, I left, um, this is an example from Kenosha when they did an RFP, North County for, uh, Old Setters Park, which is in Paddock Lake. So it's, again, very common, governments building properties, but don't want to have to be the one that actually.
Yeah, but percentage lease is not common in the restaurant business.
In the restaurant business, absolutely not. It is when it's leasing a piece of the property.
Yeah, it's not common. I, I, you gotta be competitive, you can't undercut another business on the lease money and say, we're going to rent it for half of whatever the market value is, that, that's not fair to the other people surrounding it. So it's got to be market rate, simple as that.
The, the only expert, the only thing about that one that makes a little difference is that when that was designed and engineered, there's, so there's no grease trap, right? So it really is going to limit your capabilities. You can't have fryers in there, there's no hood system. So there's going to be a lot of.
No, but we have, we had an ice cream shop before you were born.
Yeah.
We had an ice cream shop, they never had that. We've had other businesses that never had fryers, ice cream, stuff like that. So I hear what you're saying, but we've had successful businesses as well that, um, it's true, go through town without that, that's not a, a, a thing that, if you don't have a fryer, you're dead in the business. Um, probably, probably was probably going to happen with that building, it's going to be backed up with a food truck. That's going to be because they don't have an ancillary system in there, they don't have a lot of stuff, so it's going to be backed up. Whoever, whoever would rent it probably is going to rent it that has the food truck business. And they're going to do the cooking and, and whatever, that's probably what's going to, so someone that would rent it probably is going to have a secondary business.
Any, any more slides?
No, that's it.
All right. Here's an expensive one.
Good evening, yeah. Um, so just a couple of highlights, so the front team here has mentioned the police department does take up quite a bit of the annual operating budget. Just wanted to give everyone a little perspective as to why that is, um, and where some of those increases that you're seeing in our personnel costs are coming from. Uh, we are adding the one position that was authorized by the board in this current fiscal year, which probably won't be added until about the turn of the fiscal year. And although we're going to absorb the cost of a new officer, the district is going to be reimbursing seventy-five percent of the SR, SR wage and a hundred percent of their overtime costs at a higher level. So for instance, an officer to go into the school, it's going to be a minimum of a three-year officer, which is a higher cost to the entry-level officer that we're going to backfill that position. So also it states seventy-five percent's recouped, it's a little bit skewed because we're probably going to recoup a larger cost of that lower officer coming in. Uh, one thing that, you know, we've discussed a little bit before is, you know, trying to anticipate the wage impacts, um, as Zeta spent a lot of time trying to calculate. It's a little bit of difficult, little bit of difficulty with it because there's, there's some level of unpredictability right now with the collective bargaining market that's out there. Um, our sergeant patrol officer contract expires April thirtieth of this year. And while we can kind of look at some of the trends that are taking place, there's a lot of other implications that take, that, that go into that beyond just, um, the percentage-based increases as we start looking at comparables and other, uh, other communities that are within our market. Wanted to give you a little bit of perspective, um, on the police department's size. So I know it seems like we've hired a lot of people over the last couple of years. But if you look at a fourteen-year trend of where the police department was in two thousand and ten, as compared to where it is in two thousand and twenty-four, we've had a net gain of one officer. Um, so we really haven't grown in excess of where we were historically, and we went through a pretty, pretty long period where we had a lot of retirements around two thousand and eleven. Uh, we gave up several positions through attrition to try to meet some of the budgetary challenges the village was experiencing at the time. Um, and over the years, we, we've slowly kind of inched back to where we were back in, back in two thousand and ten. And if you look, um, you know, our, our command staffing level is down a little bit, so we've given up some of the, the command level officers to try to put more officers on the streets. Our detective staffing positions are identic, are identical to what they were then. Uh, the number of officers that were on the street at the time is actually a little bit lower. That's a result of some positions that we currently have in training and then that were made on build. Mirror that with the call volumes that we've experienced over the last, last four years. You can see that between two thousand and twenty, when we were in the midst of a pandemic, um, and the numbers, you know, as we went into the pandemic, we're right around that ten thousand calls per year mark. But we've inched back and increased about a thousand calls per year at the time. Twenty twenty-three leveled off a little bit for us. Um, but when you start digging into that, the, the call statistics, it's, it's pretty interesting. So back, you know, pre, pre-COVID, um, you know, before all these law enforcement reforms and kind of the, the new challenges that we, that we face as a society emerged, a lot of our call data, call originate, originations from what we call C-VA, which is self-initiated field activity by the officers. That's, that's the traffic stops, that's the extra neighborhood patrols, the park checks, those sort of things. And now the predominant driver of our, our incidents is calls and service demands coming from the community. So while those numbers of service demands from the community continue to go up, unfortunately, that leaves less time the officers to dedicate to those self-initiated field activities like those traffic stops and those type of things. It's not that we're not in the neighborhoods, it's not that we're not stopping cars and taking traffic enforcement measures seriously. It's just that there's other things that are pulling the officers away from those things that historically they were able to dedicate more time to. So notable things as we transition from twenty-four to twenty-five, um, kind of the larger increases and adjustments that we made. So we used an average, um, that was provided by Zeta of an overall five percent increase in our contractual services. So most of those were just flat increases across the board. Keeping in mind that we are having an addition of the block license plate readers, um, that's going to be a twelve thousand five hundred dollar cost impact to the budget under the five-year agreement that we're currently under block with. Uh, just a little update to the board while we're talking about that. So about three weeks ago, we were notified by IDOT that our permit for installation was approved, which we've been waiting for about six months. Unfortunately, at that same time, the vendor that supplies the mount, I got approved mounting posts that they have to go on, went into backorder status. So we're making progress, they're telling us that we should only see a six to eight week back order on those posts. So we're still hoping that before we really kick off into the spring and summer season, that we'll be able to have those license plate readers up in, uh, in use. Um, uniforms, you see a big decrease in the uniform budget line this year. Um, that was because the board was, was gracious enough last year to make the decision to upgrade all of our officers' body armor packages. We had originally proposed a phased approach to that, whether it take a number of years, um, and looking at it, the board felt it was best to make sure that all of our officers had the best equipment, uh, life-saving equipment at the time. So we invested a significant amount of money in achieving that in one year. So that cost will level off for a period of five years, which is the lifespan and warranty period of that body armor and rifle-rated plates that they're all wearing. But in five years, though, we'll hit the budget again, we'll have to replace them. The program expenses, uh, historically they've remained relatively flat. There was the increase in that line for the Department Therapy and Comfort Station, K-9 program that, uh, was being funded by the Lions Club. So although you're going to see an expense, uh, on that, on that budget line, it's being offset by donations from the Lions Club and in conversations with members of their board, they anticipate their ability to continue to fund the upkeep and maintenance of that program into the foreseeable future. And then, like many of the other, uh, department budgets, uh, you saw a big uptick in software. That's because historically, we did not use those software lines, uh, village-wide. But in order to try to start tracking the amount of money and costs that we're allocating to technology, we made the decision for all of our departments to move, uh, their software into that newly created line. Um, we were able to finally decrease our, our training budget, um, by a substantial amount. Uh, one of my early goals when I took over the PD in two thousand and twenty was to change how we were doing things. For, for most of my career, we relied heavily on external training sources for most of our, most of our staffs. We would, we would spend money sending them off to classes, um, looking at the challenges that we face and kind of the way law enforcement's evolving. We felt it was important for us to start bringing some of those training initiatives in-house, having, uh, experts in these, in these specific, um, skill sets within the department, not only to train us, but we've actually assisted some of our. uh, skill sets within the department, not only to train us, but we've actually assisted some of our other neighboring communities with some of their training challenges that they've had. So over the last couple of years, there was an upward trend in the amount of money that we were investing in training, but as we've achieved these things, which I'll show you in the next, next uh, next slide, we were able to start backing off that a little bit. Um, so you may not know, is a board that we have state certified in-house instructors in all of these specific areas, uh, you know, so it's vehicle, uh, first vehicle operations, C CPR eighty and first aid, high risk patrol operations, tactical hand stuffing, taser, rapid deployment, pepper ball instructor, close quarter combat skills, ballistic shield instructor, red dot optic applications, preaching, the escalation techniques, use force, town instructor, advanced pistol, advanced rifle and multi weapon platform armors. And that's in addition to uh, every member of the department other than the command staff being CIT certified. Um, while we're able to hold our budget relatively uh, flat in the things that we control outside of personnel, there are some things on the horizon that are going to hit next year that are, are going to have some likely substantial uh, impacts. As you know, we're looking to transition our nine one one center. Uh, so right around the time this regional consolidation discussion started happening two years ago in Lake County, our current dispatch center was notified by the Villa de Brown Lake Beach that they were going to have to get out of the current building that they're using. The Villa de Brown Lake Beach owns it. They have a new purpose for it. So they, the dispatch center was essentially being convicted, um, effective end of twenty five, their lease is through. Fortunately, this, this conversation started, um, with regional consolidation. And and looking at options right now, even though we're going to see a cost increase from what we're spending now, it looks like that regional consolidation center is probably going to be our best option. This year, we're anticipating a cost of three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars for dispatch services. Uh, the in estimated increase based off a twelve million dollar operating budget for, for the Lake Tom Center is going to increase our, our cost for dispatch services about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Now that looks like a substantial uh, sticker shock, but that's not taking into consideration what's happening with the ETSB and the nine one one surcharge money that's generated out of our community. Currently that'll go to the Lake County ETSB, which is used to fund um, some of the nine one one infrastructure in the county. But as part of this consolidation effort, that ETSB is going to be dissolved in a new joint ETSB is going to be established. It's anticipated that those funds that are generated by nine one one surcharge money are going to be directed into the operations of the center. So even though initially the operating deficit or increase is going to be a hundred thousand dollars, there's an, there's anticipation that 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 difference is going to be brought down substantially by the nine one one surcharge money pouring into the, into the center. So they keep telling us that departments like us that have been paying, paying on a user based fee service structure for years are going to see minimal in cost creases. There are communities out there, um, in the Lake Villa, for instance, who is currently with Foxcom. Fox Lake substantially underwrites the cost of their dispatch services. They're going to go from an estimated cost right now of eighty thousand dollars a year for dispatch services to nearly three hundred thousand. So you know, even though we're going to see an uptick, our uh, impacts are 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 minimal compared to others. Next year, our body worn camera system is going to be five years old, um, that reaches the end of the uh, end of life of the equipment itself. Uh, we had signed five year licensing agreements at the time with our current provider. So as we enter into this next fiscal year, we need to start reevaluating what our option is going to be, um, either re-upping all of our licensing agreements, uh, replacing the equipment with the current provider that we have. Um, I know Amy cringes sometimes at that thought process. Or moving with the newer technology, uh, which um, in many ways, we're kind of being driven into by external factors, and that would be the Axon system by Taser. Uh, one reason for that is the state's attorney, uh, made the decision that they're not going to accept any external digital sharing, file sharing through any other platform other than Axon's. So what that would allow us to do is transfer all of our reports, pictures, evidence, all this kind of stuff electronically. The state's attorney currently staff is having to upload those onto uh, uh, electronic media file like flash drives and those sort of things and driving them down there. So there's a lot of inefficiencies and costs that we're facing with that. We had planned initially to replace our drone this year. Um, it it's, it's about due. Um, but as a result of kind of some of the budgetary challenges, we found some ways to put some maintenance costs into it. We should be able to get another year out of that drone. Uh, as you know, Highland Park back fourth of July, a couple of years back, uh, really changed how communities approach event security. And where initially that drone was a luxury for us to have for these events. Now it's really become an essential part of the service. Way we keep our community safe during these uh, during these trades and everything else we have. And that's going to come at a cost of between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars. Then again, I just highlighted the, and the collective bargaining impacts for the next CBA, uh, what those increases are going to be here over here are really difficult for us to uh, project at this point. That'll end mine and go to Dennis. I'll steer for you, Dennis.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thanks.
Thank you. Um, with this slide, what I really wanted to do is just show you uh, a past that from two thousand and twenty to current until relatively the flat line that each budget that I have, whether it's uh, the depot parking or our general PWs or law generally is, is a flat line. We, we have not had drastic increases in our spending. Um, so this is some of them, some years you may see that may have been when a large project occurred. Uh, but for the most part, it is generally uh, pretty straight and flat. Uh, next slide. Um, this is an overview basically of each sub department that we have and we're coming for it, uh, this year. I hope to continue the uh, crack ceiling program, which we introduced this past year uh, and continue the sidewalk lifting, which we've done uh, quite a few years now. Uh, we get a, a lot of sidewalk trip hazards lifted with a minimal amount of money. Uh, we have reduced the uh, fund for the tree planting, which was originally started with the em, Emerald Ash Core and a fifty fifty program with the HOAs and some individual homeowners to get trees back within park play. Uh, we have uh, taken that out this year. Um, there's nothing planned for our facilities. The fleet, uh, back in two thousand and nineteen was my last order recently, uh, late in twenty three. The board allowed me to purchase some vehicles. Those will hopefully be coming in uh, late summer, early fall. With a couple of those pieces, I will need to outfit them with a service body, uh, which is basically uh, a back end of the pickup truck gets removed, the pickup part, and it's more of a cargo toolbox. Or those vehicles, we have those currently, and then a dump body for the uh, cabin chassis, which will replace one at a long time. Um, no change in parts, uh, a big item both in our water and sewer and our wastewater treatment plant is Skater. Uh, that is basically a uh, computer system that allows our uh, staff to monitor via from their desktop or at home, uh, water levels, pumpage. Uh, the treatment plant can control certain functions from their house if there's an emergency. Uh, unfortunately, the system is to its useful life, uh, in the water and sewer, uh, beyond uh, components that we need to replace are potentially obsolete. Uh, software needs to be uh, basically replaced. So uh, it will be a process that we did start this year. Um, there's some more expense coming in fiscal year twenty five. Uh, twenty six will be a large expense. They've almost three hundred thousand dollars in water to replace uh, radios. So um, we'll see that next year. Um, the uh, membrane, the digester membrane replacement that's in the treatment plant, we did uh, half of that system this year. Uh, it is a thirty year old system that is well overdue. Uh, we actually, the reason why we did this year is we actually had a uh, break in the membrane, which caused a fluid to go back into um, the digester component. So we hope to complete the other half of that. And then the fine screen upgrades. Uh, the fine screen is located in the headworks uh, building, which is basically the first uh, it's basically the primary entry of all the sewer collection into the treatment plant. What fine screen does is it's basically a big drum that rotates and filters out that flow that comes in and pulls out any debris that we don't want in there. Um, one common thing is rats. The current fine screen traps about thirty percent of the unwadded materials. Um, so as that sys, as that's only capturing thirty percent, the remainder goes into the the treatment plant, um, through all the processes. We've had a lot of uh, premature failures on pumps, blocking of pumps. Uh, that takes up a lot of staff time to either replace the pump, unplug the pump, come in uh, on the weekends and so forth. Uh, and it was planned to do that fine screen upgrade in fiscal year twenty four, but unfortunately a lot of the projects that we had going on down there, uh, it didn't take very good. Uh, next. This is just an overview of some of what I discussed, um, representing in the, in the certain sub department, but I do want to highlight the areas that um, to create a not a deficit, uh, uh, facilities have reductions, parks have reductions, streets have reductions and fleet had reductions. And all these reductions are into the operational uh, end of it. These are projects or um, uh, wanted items, just your general maintenance to the, to the zero. Like that, I mean, Don, unless you have any question?
Questions? All right, that is the end then, right? Uh, any other questions or comments? Thank you for uh, doing this. So you said the uh, final budget will be approved March or early April. So
Whenever the board.
Whenever the board's ready to go. If it's good to go, we'll do it on thirteenth of March. So.
Yeah.
All right, um, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Motion trustee Peterson. Second trustee McNeil, all in favor?
Fine.
Any opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned at six fifty two.